Thank you, Commissioner. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Blanco?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Mahajer?
Here.
Commissioner Dickerson absent, and Chair Seifer.
Here. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the planning commission meetings of last meeting? April 17th.
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the planning commission meetings of April 17, 2024.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The approval is approved. At this time, we're going into public comment period. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business that is not on the agenda. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. Tracy, do we have anyone on Zoom tonight?
Chair Seifer, no, we do not.
And I have no slips, and I don't see anyone that wants to speak. So we're going to move on from number four. That brings us to tonight's public hearing. Number 5A, Starbucks drive-through plan development permit and conditional use permit at 1202 West Beteravia Road. Staff?
Thank you, Chair Seifer. Good evening. I'm Cody Graybell, senior planner with the city. I'll be presenting the Starbucks project that's located at 1202 West Beteravia Road, and this project was introduced to the public and the planning commission at the April 18th study session. Site is at the southwest corner of West Beteravia Road and Skyway Drive, and the project area has been developed with a mix of industrial and commercial development. To the north and to the west of the site is industrial land uses, and to the south and east is commercial with, to the south, a office space, and to the east, a drive-through McDonald's. The site is zone PDC2, planned development, general, commercial, and it's surrounded by a mix of commercial and industrial zoning. The project site is half acre in size and is currently vacant, and there are raised medians on the project frontages that limit access in and out of the site to right turn only. And per the city's general plan circulation element, both West Beteravia Road and Skyway Drive are primary arterials, so there will be a requirement for right-of-way dedication and frontage improvements on both of the streets to widen the streets along the frontages to meet the city's standard primary arterial width, and staff will be discussing those improvements in more detail on the coming slides. So this is a perspective from the raised median on Skyway looking onto the site facing west. The proposed building is 1,300 square feet in size, and it's a drive-through only. There's no walk-in or walk-up window service or pickup services proposed. And again, the driveway access is limited to right in and right out only. There's access from Beteravia Road as well as Skyway Drive proposed, and there's over 100 feet of separation from the intersections to the private driveway on each of the frontages, which provides adequate site distances for vehicles and pedestrians. Vehicles would enter the site from either driveway and head to the middle before entering the drive-through queue, and then they'd move in a counterclockwise fashion around the building before exiting the drive-through only vehicle lanes at the northwest corner of the site, and then they would maneuver with right-hand turns only from Beteravia Road or Skyway onto the adjacent street network. And the, pardon me, go back one slide. The site plan is providing seven parking spaces for employees, and up to 10 spaces are required, so there is a parking reduction that is proposed, and that is possible through the plan development permit. Staff is going to go into a bit more detail on that subject in a couple slides, and there is an excess in landscaping proposed tonight. 15% landscaping is typically required, 33% is proposed. And then there is vehicle queuing for up to 13 vehicles, and a traffic study was provided that also included queuing analysis. It observed 10 different California drive-throughs, some in Simi Valley, Lompoc, Oxnard, and Ventura, and it determined that there'd be a range of anywhere from nine to 14 vehicles that could be queuing during the AM peak periods. So this site is proposing 13 vehicles, and staff has reviewed the analysis, and we are confident that any excess queuing could be handled within the internal driveways before they would impact the adjacent street networks. So next subject I'm going to discuss is the right-of-way dedications required to provide the primary arterial standard widths on both West Beteravia Road and Skyway Drive. So the red line on the screen represents the new location of the property lines after dedication occurs to meet the primary arterial widths for both streets, and there would be 14 feet of dedication required on West Beteravia Road and eight feet of dedication on Skyway Drive. And the applicant has agreed to dedicate, as conditions of approval, the additional right-of-way on both streets prior to Starbucks' opening. And the black dashed line shown on the outer edge of Skyway Drive represents the existing improvements, like the curb, gutter, and the sidewalk, that would have to be relocated as part of this project. And some of the new frontage improvements will include roadway widening with new curb, gutter, sidewalk, bike lanes, street trees, as well as the striping of the crosswalk. So there is a parking reduction that is being requested by the applicant, and again, it's from 10 spaces to seven, and there are required findings that have to occur through the plan development permit. The commission can approve, which are listed on the screen, and the reduced parking does allow the preferred site design from the city's planning and engineering division's perspective because it allows building placement to maximize the separation distances of the site's access driveways from Beteravia and Skyway to the street intersections. And also, given that this site is a walk-in service only, there really is a minimum amount of, excuse me, it's not walk-in service, it's only drive-through, pardon me, staff can support the parking reduction because the parking really is only needed for the employees, and it's anticipated that there'd be two to four employees per shift, and the seven parking spaces proposed would provide a surplus of parking. So the coffee shop is a right-angled building, it's 1,300 square feet in size, and again, it's drive-through only, and the applicant is proposing an operation that would be 24/7 with, again, two to four employees utilized per shift. And the building is proposed to be 20 feet tall, it's under the maximum of 40 feet that's allowed in the C2 zone, and the exterior materials proposed include wood and metal panel siding, aluminum storefront window systems, and spandrel and architectural glass. And there is a metal canopy roof awning system proposed that extends around the building, and it's supported by steel columns, and the paint scheme is of darker subdued metallic tones, and it includes black, brown, and bronze and gray accents. So there's a couple renderings I'm going to walk through next. This is from the intersection of Skyway and Beteravia if you're facing south. This is from the Beteravia driveway facing southwest. And this is from the Skyway driveway facing northwest. So environmental review is completed for the project, and prior to any determination being made, the city reviewed a traffic study and analysis for the project, and we agreed with the determinations, finding that the project would not have negative impacts on the surrounding streets and would not cause undue congestion for the area, so the project does qualify for the Class 32 infill exemption, and no further environmental review is required. Staff recommends that the planning commission take the following actions tonight. By motion, approve plan development permit PD 2023-009 and conditional use permit U 2023-007. That concludes staff's presentation, and staff and the applicant are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cody. Do we have any questions for staff? Excuse me, Commissioner Mahajer.
Thank you, Chair. To confirm, the hours of operation were 24 hours?
Commissioner Mahajer, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then, just for reference, do you happen to have the initial plan, including the 10 parking spaces, for comparison purposes?
Yes, Commissioner Mahajer, so I just shared that on the screen.
Okay.
Chair and members of the commission, if I could also interject, one thing that this plan, which was the, originally a proposed plan, depicts is the right-of-way improvements that were originally appro, proposed, excuse me, on Beteravia Road. And you can see there is an awkward transition of the curb line and the street line between this site and the site to the west. Just as a point of clarification, both street right-of-ways will be dedicated with this project. Only the Skyway Drive improvements will occur with this project at this time. The Beteravia Road physical improvements will be deferred to a future date, at which time the city is going to be looking at improving the corridor along Beteravia Road all at one time to avoid the abrupt transition that you see here.
So Frank, does any include, there's those high-power PG&E lines, there's traffic controllers, there's quite a bit of stuff there on Beteravia, so none of that is going to be undergrounded at this time?
Not at this time. Things will be relocated associated with the Skyway Drive improvements, and I'm not sure of the details of that, so there may be some of that that gets relocated now just for efficiency, but the bulk of the street improvements will be at a future date. The applicant is paying an in-lu fee for those, so this project is taking responsibility for all of that, it's just going to be deferred.
Is McDonald's the only one that's actually done the modifications to date?
I know McDonald's has, I'm not sure about the remainder of the corridor on the east side.
I've never seen anyone change anything, so it's the whole Beteravia?
Well, it would be from this site to the west, a distance that's not been determined at this point in time. Again, it's left for a future effort where everything can be done at one time.
I thought the improvements were also going to the east. I thought we were going all the way up to Broadway.
I'll defer that question to our engineering staff.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the commission. That is correct. There is a future project identified to widen Beteravia to its ultimate width, ranging from, or spanning A Street to Broadway, if I'm not mistaken.
From A Street?
Mm-hmm.
So all, so I would assume that, like StoreQuest, they've already abided by this? Yes, okay, because they, yeah, because that's a very wide street right there. So, okay, so some of that improvement has been done to date on the west?
Yes, correct.
Yes, going, yes, going to the west. Okay, interesting. Do we have any other questions? Seeing none. Okay. Do we have any expertise? I have none either. Would the applicant like to do a presentation tonight?
Not a presentation, but I could clarify some.
That'd be fine. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we'll hear.
Scott Boydston with Rasmussen and Associates Architects. We're out of Ventura, California. I'm here on behalf of Starbucks. I'd just like to clarify that on the first phase of the project, the signals will in fact be moved out of the right-of-way, so they don't have to be moved again, and we will underground all utilities.
That's on the first phase?
Yes.
Nice, okay.
And then I'm here for questions.
Do we have any questions? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is, if you have a wrong order, how do you, what do you do? Do you park somewhere and knock on the door, or where do you go?
Well, they'll, at peak hours, they'll have somebody actually outside to answer any questions or help customers, so there will be a person outside the cafe itself as part of the queuing lanes.
But that's beyond, after, that's after you pay as well, or?
Prior to.
Okay. And then, and then I just, one of the concerns I had was the internal circulation. I know you have the two entrances, and you have the stacking or the queuing lines. If you're coming in off of Skyway, you have a longer queue if that, if that actual queuing line is all the way backed up. If you're coming off of Beteravia, you have about, I don't know, four or five cars. So everybody exiting that lane, I'm sorry, exiting the restaurant is going to have to go right and right onto Beteravia because you're not going to queue to go back around to get southbound on, on Skyway. Is there a, I think our interim community development director for Chick-fil-A had a traffic management plan? Is there something like that for this?
Mm-hmm. Yes, it was submitted.
Okay.
And I would just point out, we don't expect, at the worst case, having one car outside the queuing lane, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't even be in front of the exit queue.
Would there be any signage that if you're coming from the south, making that bend from the south, you go the first lane, and then if you're coming, heading south, I'm sorry, coming in from the north, you would use the first lane? Is there, is there any signage of that?
There's signage on both sides showing that these are active queuing lanes, so depending on, on your choice and how many cars are in the queue, you can sort of pick your lane.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
If I could clarify one thing?
Please.
Okay, yeah, so there is, through the traffic study, there was queuing analysis and a management plan proposed that Planning and Public Works looked at and agreed with the conclusions, and then there is a handful of conditions that regulate the drive-through monitoring, particularly condition number three, that we can work with the applicant if there ever are issues to resolve, any potential problems.
And just to clarify, so Commissioner Lopez was saying about turning right to get out. If there's no traffic, you can still go left and get out on Skyway?
Yeah, very easily. I anticipate a lot of people will do that.
Yeah, the only thing is, is that anybody that's driven by the Starbucks in Orchid, wow.
We learn from those things.
It's, yeah, it's a similar situation, and that place is one, I can't believe people actually go in there and park. It's just crazy to me. It is so busy. Not quite the level of the Chick-fil-A, but that is a busy store. So we can't turn left or right, depending on the traffic. Questions? Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to open the meeting to the public. I have no written communications. I don't see anyone in the audience. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Chair Seifer, we have no public comments requested.
Very good. Do you have any questions for us? Okay. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for discussion or a motion. Commissioners? Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, no, I, one of my concerns is just the internal circulation. If there is a traffic management plan, as, as condition three of the permit shows, the drive-through monitoring, what are those thresholds? What, what triggers city or stepping in?
Commissioner Lopez, I believe if we receive complaints about the adjacent street networks being impacted, at that point, staff would step in and work with the property owner and the Starbucks team.
Okay. Yeah, so I think that was, that was my biggest concern, and I, again, the internal circulation, I think that if you're coming westbound or eastbound on, on Beteravia, you're going to turn in, coming in from the north, and I just think it, in the afternoon, I mean, it's a popular place, it is. I've been in, in line for coffee, and it's 15, 20 minutes at times just to get from the ordering point through the coffee to get, to purchase. So I'm glad that the drive-through monitoring is there. That really was my only concern. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. Commissioners? Commissioner Blanco?
Yeah, I am, the circulation was the main, I guess, concern and impacts the traffic on the streets, but I, I kind of see that they thought it through pretty carefully. I'm glad they looked at the queuing analysis with other similar sites and have factored that in. I do like this final layout more than the prior layout. I think the driveway so close to the intersection with the other one would have been really problematic. I think this is probably the best layout, I mean, seems to be the best layout you could have, given the size of the site, and maybe the best use too. You know, regardless, I mean, obviously, anything, any kind of use there is just going to generate more traffic and a little bit more complications or conflicts, but I think the way it's been mitigated makes, makes good sense, and to have a plan for, you know, extenuating circumstances is good, and to have the city capable to step in and, and address it with the property owner is great. Such a small parcel that I think is probably about the only thing that makes sense, maybe. So I appreciate the, the study session was really helpful, by the way, and really kind of helped answer a lot of questions, so I appreciate the, the feedback there, and then also the response to some of our concerns, I think, has been great. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mahajer?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I have to echo Commissioner Blanco and Commissioner Lopez in that the circulation was always just going to be a little bit iffy for us, but from what I've seen in this updated layout, I think it's fine. I think my main concern was the entrances, especially coming off from Beteravia and into the, the plan development, but I'm okay with the reduction parking because I think it provides for the improvements there on both entrances. And for me, excess of landscaping is totally fine. I love the screening of the drive-through, so that is my input. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, really thank you for listening to us on the design. The new plan is much better than the original. I think it's going to do a much better job in the traffic control. My, my always concern is the people that are, Beteravia is a very fast street. Skyway can be fast too, but at that intersection, people generally be slower, and hopefully, when they're getting to that light, they'll be slowing down on Beteravia too. But I see those people on Clark, and that is a real concern, so hopefully, we've got this mitigated, and you guys, and the traffic control, and everybody's good. The, the parking isn't a concern for me. I was going to question the bike racks, but then I remember you might have employees riding their bikes there, so I didn't question that. But I don't see a lot of people riding to work, but it'd be great if we did, and then that'll get us back to our discussion on the bike paths, so that, that's always a good, a good discussion. And I think it's a great thing that you're doing the improvements now. I think it's going to be better for you in the long run and better for us, so thanks for taking that. It's a huge step and quite a bit of an expense, but I think it's well spent upfront, as I guess you do too. So thank you for that. I can totally see supporting this project, and at this time, I'd be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion here, Chair. I move that we approve plan development permit PD 2023-0009 and conditional use permit U 2023-0007.
And do we have a second on that?
Second.
And a roll call, please? Tracy?
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahajer?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickerson absent, and Chair Seifer.
Aye. Project's approved, thank you very much. We'll look forward to seeing it, and apparently Commissioner Lopez will be there as soon as it opens. Thank you very much. I don't know, you seem to make it. At this time, we'll go to item number six, oral reports from planning commission and staff. Do we have any reports from staff?
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. I would like to just go over the upcoming meeting schedule.
Perfect, thank you.
And so tomorrow, June 20th, there will be no study session. The next hearing is July 3rd, which has been canceled for the holiday, as has the July 4th study session, clearly been canceled.
Good, good move on that one.
And so the next public hearing meeting will be on July 17th, and there is a possibility of a study session item on July 18th.
Perfect.
And then if I may just touch base on last night's council meeting, the items that we wanted to call out was, the council did adopt the 2426 budget for the city, so that is set, and they also adopted a revision to city fees. So at this point in time, after progressing with a midway point for a year, the city fees for things such as development projects and permits are actually at 100% cost recovery. So we are, the, the analysis that looked at the amount of work and the amount of hours and staff time each project takes was, brought us to 100% fee recovery, which the council did adopt last night. And that concludes staff's reports. And that concludes staff's reports.
Frank, have we gotten any movement on the annexation or where we're moving on the plan?
Those, those are still parts of the general plan analysis that's happening right now. I know the general plan update is looking at that possibility of annexation in the future alternatives and through the environmental document that's being produced for the, for the general plan update. Decisions on that direction, a final decision, won't be until later in the general plan update process.
I'm guessing there are lack of meetings or because we're running out of land and Santa Maria had to build on, all we're doing is infill projects at this, at this point.
There are a lot of infill. I can't tell you why precisely that's occurring, but we have some other projects coming online. We are still receiving some applications for new development.
Have we heard anything from Canfield? Yeah, because that's a big one. And that's, I haven't seen any movement on that.
I've not heard any additional information beyond the approval of their discretionary permits.
There's a few building permits that we're reviewing.
The, yeah, the interim director just did inform me that we did receive a few building permits for some of the Canfield projects. So those are in process.
Nice.
Do you know the status of the park over there by chance? If that's moving forward separately from, from that development or if that's, just curious.
Yeah, that, that's still in design with recreation and parks, is my understanding.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's the, the status for that whole downtown project that the Vernon Group was, was working on?
I believe there's still work happening in the background on that. The agreements are still being worked on. And I know that we have received some building permit applications on those permits as well.
Is that, is that the firefighters apartments? I can't recall. The Newman?
Alvin Newton Apartments, yes. That would be one. The Follas rebuild is in process, in building permit process.
Oh, okay. Cool.
That Follas is going to be quite a project to watch.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I liked it when the architect said, "We have such good bones." And then he said, "Oh, it'll be interesting to see what's under there." So I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing that one go.
It's going to be interesting.
It is. Anything else? Okay, I think that's it for tonight. At this time, we are adjourned.
Did you hit it?